Five hundred and fifty to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And call me in order, full call.
Mary Westover.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Beckman.
Yes.
Walton.
Yes.
Public forum, would anybody like to address the council of public forum? We want a consent agenda. Most to approve.
So move.
Second. Full call.
Walton.
Yes.
Beckman.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Until these rectory board, listen.
All right, first thing we'll go over is in front of you what you have. We'll look at this one first, it's the report that we got from Viking when they came and cleaned our clear well. If you notice on page like four, this portion right here, this picture that you'll see. At page four, page four, top corner. So what that is, is that's the pipe that comes from the aerator down and then uh, the water sits there and works its way around to the high service pumps pump it out. That is a whole bunch of calcium buildup right there that we ended up taking a sledgehammer to um, to try to knock it down to make it so that we didn't plug that pipe, because if that pipe plugs, we have no water. Um, so that was, that was the easy fix without taking the clear well down for probably at least two weeks and it's gonna take an acid, so you gotta acid it, you gotta fill it, you gotta drain it, you gotta acid it again, fill it, drain it. Um, and it can be anywhere from a two to four week process. Depending on where we go with upgrades, this is something that we need to start to plan forward on unless we do go down the process of a new plant, which in that timeframe, then we can do that as part of that project, if that makes sense. Any questions on that? So.
Would that hurt the integrity of the pipe?
No.
While I cast?
No.
Well, and the other thing, we'd be under a boil order.
We'd be under a boil order, our boil water advisory, um, for the entire period depending um, on which path we wanna go down, we could go to a temporary storage unit, which Viking does bring those trucks in, you just pay for it. Um, so it all depends on when we get to that point, we'll have to weigh all options that we have um, to see which path we wanna go down. But um, in the near future, it's something that's gonna have to be done. Not dire straits today by any means, but it's something we need to look into the future for and progress forward on.
Does that calcium buildup come from our hard water from our well?
Yep, exactly where it comes from. So, um, the next picture that you see, that is um, our electrical inter duct going directly through a sewer line that we discovered. Um, one of our lift stations is taking on way too much water from what um, has been happening. So we had rehab system come in and camera that line and um, fifty-four feet from the manhole according to the measurement on the camera. Uh, there's the inter duct going directly through and uh, the other, when you come from the other direction, you can see off to the side of the pipe, there's like a pocket uh, and it's just full of water and we think the water is starting to flow out of that and that's why we're getting so much water into our lift station. Um, we did camera up farther, we didn't find any other major issues to the point where we were at. Um, so we do have an issue and currently working on getting bids to get this fixed.
This is on Crescent Park Drive?
This is, that is on Denison Beach. But it is the Crescent Park Lift Station that's taking the water.
Right, the cross from?
Kettering, Kettering, Goldenview.
Uh, I'll say okay.
Down at the bottom of the hill basically, Crescent Park Drive.
Is this something we can't do?
So, I've never fixed a sewer line like that. Um, what we're doing on the bid process of it is to rip up the road, we will rip up the road, we will do the excavation of it and we'll have the contractor come in, well, the, our linesman will move the inter duct. Um, and then we'll do the pipe repair and then the contractor will report the concrete.
Is this something that we should be responsible for, shouldn't them people that put that inter duct in there?
The thing, the thing is trying to trace it, the big thing is trying to trace it back to when it was, I guess, done and who would have been responsible for it at that time. Because it was, according to Trent, it was well before his time.
Well before, or Austin, so. Previous, and Austin's been here almost five years, so I don't know when it was done.
Well, we've, we've got personnel in town that, you know, are retired that I'm sure can answer that.
I mean, we can try to go after the boring company, I don't know where it'll get us.
We can make an attempt, I don't, yeah, it's, it's, it's been, been there a long time, I don't know, you know.
So.
We can try and trace it back, I don't, I, I honestly, I don't know, I, you know.
At, at the end of the day, we do have.
Considering any warranty or anything that would have been probably done on it at the time, you know, they, they would have been a subcontractor of us technically.
Yeah.
So, but we can see what we can do.
So.
How, how long of an area, how big of an area do we get it?
We're looking at about sixty-five feet, um, and the road's eighteen foot wide. And the reason why we're looking at the sixty-five feet is where the guy's located the electrical is not where we stopped the camera at. So, there's about a fifteen to twenty foot difference. So do we go where we, the camera said and trust that measurement, or do we go off of what our linesman and their locator says? So the sixty-five feet encompasses both on the concrete aspect of it. Um, and then the excavation of it, once we get the road out and we can dig to it, we'll do the digging to find it. It's just the, the relaying of the concrete.
And is the road that you're talking about on Denison Beach Drive Road?
It is.
Well, and, and we looked at the, I mean, the quality of the street there, that can, I think that's kind of the reason why we went to the sixty-five feet was that there's places in there that, I mean, it's not gonna hurt anything to, to make it better.
And is, do we think this is why we'll get the heavy rains, that the stationary is backed up?
We think that's part of it. I, I'm kinda under the philosophy on this one, let's fix one problem before we find nineteen other problems.
Well, or, the other thing I was gonna say, did you camera the other direction from that lift station? This is the only, anything?
That's the only thing that we can see.
Didn't see no field tiles or nothing dropping in there, going across there.
Oh. And that's what we thought, especially there's uh, there's a storm drain on one side of the road and then it goes across the road and then there's a storm drain uh, in the middle of the gentleman's driveway, which goes out to the lake. We thought for sure maybe that had broke, um, and that's where we were getting a lot of that water, but it was spotless in that area. So, we're, we're in the process, we're working on it, um, probably, hopefully next council meeting we'll have the quotes on what it's gonna cost. So, um, now the rest of the stuff, we worked on to shut off, we cleaned the shop, uh, worked on the mud volleyball pitch, worked on a provost where we thought we had a water leak at a curb stop. Really wasn't a water leak, it's um, at some point in time, somebody filled the hole with majority of sand and the sand was just holding the water. Um, and then it would find the weakest point, which was uh, there's pretty much a underground vault that has multiple curb stops in it, so it was just filling up with water. It kinda worked twofold, we had to change on a curb stop anyways for a new resident, um, out there anyway, so it wasn't a total waste of time on our part. Worked on removing some trees, fixed some issues at campground, camera the Crescent Park Drive, tightened some hardware, uh, set the cross arm for the community center, dropped neutral and transformer, shut off the power to South State Road. House, um, that they were working on, hung up a pup arm for the dead end pole, fixed bald on North uh, State Road, strong wire for the community center, cleaned up from carnival, put elbows on it like wood, changed out a couple of breakers at campground, heated up the elbows on a pad of like wood, pulled wire for soaked, uh, readouts, hung disconnects, fixed a mosquito sprayer, mosquito sprayed twice, rehooked up the streetlights from soaked, uh, checked the transformer on east shore, moved the pillar top, training on the new meter system, put some more rock down at the campground, the never ending battle of mowing, um, cleaned the air conditioner out, the wastewater plant, took the brand new four fifty back to Carol as it was having some codes, um, and had it fixed under warranties, placed some wires, uh, took a branch off the power lines, power pole went down behind the shop area, they switched it to underground today. The service line at the water plant, uh, where we have to do our mandatory source entry point testing per permit. Uh, the curb stop actually plugged with calcium, so we had to dig down and unplug it, uh, pretty much. Got stuff ready for fun in the park and the concert, um, a lot of branches to pick up from the winds that we had last week. Um, and had to chop a tree that fell on a house. Uh, working on measuring and getting quotes for the projects that we're talking about, burned the brush pile, talked to the DNR over a complaint. Um, changed on meter at the water plant, meeting that about uh, upgrading a business here in town, changed out spigot at campground, sprayed mosquitoes again, fixed another issue at the campground, fixed an old sign post at the post office that was causing issues uh, at the handicap parking area, replaced the pole, uh, street sign, fixed the lights at campground. Splash pad maintenance and just regular cleanup from events and everything else that we have going on, short story.
Thank you, sir. Any administrative report?
A lot of what Jason said, I, meetings and different things, um, while our carnival wrap up, we had a little meeting with some staff. Posted for the police officer position, um, after the chief was appointed. Worked on some grant reports and some reimbursements, um, we talked with a WAPA representative about how, um, our, and WAPA is our, um, the, the power source that we have with the federal government, so we have, part of it comes from Dean and then part of our, we're part of the, the WAPA territory, um, which how the, it's hydro power that comes out of Montana, North Dakota and South Dakota and then kinda comes down into here, so. Talked with the WAPA representative and, um, discussed with them a little bit on the, the increasing rates that they are filing on, not overly excessive, but still, um, an increase. Talked with bonding, bonding council on the bonding that we're gonna discuss and different options. Had a conversation with ladies on concerns down there and their, their bikes turning a little bit. Talked with the camp redemption owners, um, about their proposed, they're proposing a project and how that, um, will be affected with the city, um, waiting on, I, I basically kinda told them to start getting their proposal together and then we could discuss further about what their plans are. Got the deed prepared for soaked and got that over to them. Pretty much.
Any questions? George, please shoot.
Yes, sir. So, uh, July, we had three hundred and forty-three calls in total upon all the events, too, that we had. Uh, Sunday, we had an event at the Dean's, uh, which is a really cool turnout, uh, for community engagement. Posted with Teresa, uh, moved patrol officer position, so hopefully that gets brought here shortly. Other than that, I think that's really it.
Thank you, George. And it was a good turnout at the Dean's for the ICHM.
Absolutely.
Got a lot of good comments from the public.
Good, good, it was fun.
Okay, we have.
Maybe just a quick question, Teresa, when you're dealt, you updated pricing for the generators for here and the fire station for the FEMA, is that still ongoing?
Yeah, I don't, I, I was trying to get pricing, um, I'd asked Trent to check on a couple of different options for us as well and I have not gotten the updated pricing, so I'm still waiting on that.
So that's FEMA's waiting for us for, or?
No, it's just, I was wanting to get updated pricing, because I don't know if FEMA's gonna come through on that with all of the other major things, so we were talking about doing something with those generators, um, I was trying to get updated pricing, so we kinda knew where we stood if we wanted to incorporate that into something that we were doing.
I just didn't know if something FEMA was saying, if they'd turn us down or anything, okay, thank you.
And we have three permits, anybody have any questions for Eric? I'll need most to approve, so move.
Second.
Jim's second?
Yep.
Full call.
Walton.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Beckman.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
And then we have JEO Engineering Group, and I think almost on westbound.
Evening mayor, council, staff. My name is Noah Dragon with JEO Consulting Group, I am a water wastewater project manager, branch manager at the Carroll office and I have had the luxury to work these interns behind me this summer. Uh, it's part of our program that the company does, JEO is in the Midwest, we have seventeen different office locations and every summer we take on average forty to fifty interns and try to give them a real world experience and so that's part of what they're doing here this evening, is uh, speaking in front of individuals as part of our job, so hopefully giving them the opportunity and talk about the project that they've worked on, as they work through this project, they're overseen by senior staff that assist them and mentor them along the way, but we also give them, um, sometimes a little bit of a leash to try to go get in trouble with and see if we can get hung up and learn through the process, so. Tonight, the interns are gonna have the show, I will be here to assist if needed. Uh, they're gonna discuss an extension that you guys have been talking about for a while and, um, at the end they'll ask for questions, thank you.
So, once again, just like Noah said, thank you all for the time tonight, we really appreciate it. It's a really good learning experience for all of us, good to get real world learning experience and so, um, we appreciate you guys all getting us the opportunity to do that. Um, we'll start by just introducing each of ourselves individually and what offices we're in for JEO. So, I will start, my name is Kayla Kraft and I'm from Lakeview, um, working in the Carroll JEO office this summer. I'm in the water wastewater and electrical department and on this project I was able to work mostly on the water main design, but also on some project coordination things.
I'm Jack Eversen in the, um, Ankeny JEO office, I'm in the water resources department and primarily on this project I worked on the design of the sanitary alignment along with the, uh, costing.
My name's Quongo Blinu, but you can just call me JJ, I work in the Ankeny office as well and I'm also part of the water resource department and on this project I helped with the can design.
My name's Brick Stein, I'm from the, uh, Ankeny Brownsville JEO office and I'm an IT specialist and I work predominantly on the ethane across and then the estimated reference information.
Yeah, my name's Jacob Reagan, I'm from, or, or primarily at the Ankeny office. I'm in the transportation and structures group there and I primarily focused on getting our wiring across Highway seventy-one. This is a lot of DOT standard stuff that we.
One seventy-five.
One seventy-five, so sorry.
It used to be one seventy-one.
Hold on, I was trying to. You were half right. Half right, thanks, sir.
Yeah, so the council noticed, um, we brought with us two different documents, they will also be up on the screen, Teresa has them up there. On top, you have the engineer's conceptual opinion of probable cost. We'll go through that a little more in depth later, but since it's on top, that total opinion of construction cost as of right now is sitting around four hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. Like I said, we'll go into depths on that one a little bit more later, but for now, we could focus on the plan set. In the plan set, we use SUDOS standard specifications, so Iowa statewide urban design specifications for this project. Um, contractors around here are pretty familiar with those, we thought it'd be easiest for both of us to sit in the contractors. Looking at that index of sheets, you'll kinda see what we're gonna walk you through today, um, on those sheets, so. Uh, the next page is just the symbols page, so here is, if there's something in the plan set for some reason we didn't call out, you can usually find what it is there, or feel free to ask us any questions as we walk through this.
Yeah, on the next page, I'm thinking. We'll have our estimated quantities, which will have our SUDOS reference number, uh, description of the, of the quantity, or sorry, description of the item and then the unit of the quantity and the course of quantity itself, that's for our contractors and to the right of that we'll have our estimated reference information, which is, SUDOS has specifications already in the manual, but we have specifications that differ from SUDOS, so those are all listed right there for the contractor to see and use if they need to.
Yep, and I'll also point out on that estimate reference information, um, one of the special provisions of this being a high stormwater area, that every night the contractors to cap the pipe and backfill the trench after each workday, which we'll talk more on the stormwater side towards the end of this, but that's going to be a footnote on that. So moving on to D one point one, this is the water main design, um, on the top half of the page you'll see the plan view of it, bottom half the profile view, we'll focus in on the plan view for now, so to kinda get your bearings. North is up on these, Highway one seventy-five, you can all see, and then, um, the property line on the left side of the page, um, at that ten plus zero zero station, that's the property line to the far west of that, um, development property. Starting up that far west side, that west property line, that's where our water main extension will end. Can also see a fire hydrant assembly there, there's a total of three of those throughout this project. Moving from, so there, there's also a T that we cap, that's how we ended the line in case there's any future expansion, that's easiest to add on to there. Moving towards the east, you'll see, uh, there's one, it's used as a construction entrance right now, a granular driveway that'll have to be removed and then replaced, all of this is trenched right now within the DOT right away. We keep moving on to one point two. It's all pretty straightforward, we keep moving along, once again, that water main will require another, uh, driveway, once again, granular to be removed and replaced. You'll see here, uh, proposed, uh, corrugated metal pipe culvert underneath of that entrance right now, which will also require a little bit of grading to the east. Uh, we'll talk about that solution a little more in depth with a picture that we had towards the end of this, but just wanted to point that out where it is on the plan set right now. And then all the way to the east, you can kinda see the, the pavement there, that's the car wash in that area. And then right here is where we'll go north across the highway, can I let Jake talk about that highway crossing?
Yeah, so with crossing and stay highway, highway is one seventy-five, uh, you have to deal with DOT unfortunately. And in doing so, you have to get what's called a utility accommodation to occupy the right of way and also on top of that, we have to encase our pipe, which does cost a lot more money, but is what's required in order to protect the roadway. Uh, and all, or, no, I believe that's it, I'll go ahead and pass it back to Kayla.
Yep, and so north of the car wash across the road is where we'll be tying into the existing main up there and that's where our water main extension will start. So, that, I will have you flip and move on to the sanitary sewer main extension, I'll pass it over to Jack.
Yeah, so on, on D two point one, that's where the sanitary sewer line ends. First, I'd like to draw your attention to the easement legend, so the water main occupies into the P right of way, but the sanitary alignment is on, you know, outside of that right of way, so there will be a need for a, a temporary construction easement and then a, and then a permanent easement as well. So then over by station, uh, zero plus zero zero, that is the end of the sewer alignment, which is ended at a, at a, a new manhole, which there are five total, uh, new manholes across this alignment. So then for future expansion, you can always tie into that one if there's a further west as needed. And as it keeps, I'm moving, I'm moving further east, again like Kayla mentioned earlier, there is that, uh, first driveway that we'll have to remove and replace and granular again. We'll keep moving on to sheet D two point two, uh, moving further west again, there's another, another one of the new manholes and again, that, that secondary driveway crossing that we'll need to remove and replace. And then at station seven plus seventy-five, that is the existing manhole that, that we will be tying into. And you, you can kinda see from that, you kinda dish out straight west from that, a manhole. And I kept it pretty straightforward, didn't wanna occupy the right of way, I have to deal with more of the DOT permitting. That is the basics of the, of, of, of the sanitary design, and I'll let Jay take a more depth of that survey.
Now, if we move to page GD zero point one, this is the horizontal alignment and control sheet. This sheet is pretty much, um, for the use of different factors. Uh, it pretty much details all the stations, all the benchmarks and, you know, per the horizontal survey control that would be used on this project site.
Now, it passes to you, Kayla.
Yep, and so then the last sheet of this plan set gives you a good overview of the project area as a whole. This is the seeding and erosion control sheet. So here you can see both the water main alignment and the sanitary sewer alignment. Um, this, this hatching is where they'll, will seed and then there'll also be a temporary erosion control mat there, as well as there's some silt fence to protect inlets as well as, um, existing culverts in that area. And then you can see it once again in relation to where everything is on that area. So, um, so that will move on to the cost estimate, the document we have, and I'll let, uh, Brick start that one.
So, this is our ethane of probable cost, uh, it's kinda broken down into divisions based on like each category of SUDOS work that will be done. Um, it'll still reference your SUDOS stack number and item description. And then the main thing about this one is your quantity and unit price, we use, we gather unit prices from historical like JEO projects, things along those lines and then online databases for uh, construction material costs and then just overall use those to have the total cost for our project.
Yeah, and like one of those online databases, the DOT did pass similar projects in, in, in like, in counties surrounding Lakeview, so the pricing should be fairly similar along those lines. The only thing that, that also we have is a contingency of twenty percent at the bottom there, that's kinda to account for unforeseen uh, cost that, that the contractors make, so.
Yeah, so I will now move on to that picture that I believe Teresa has and then on the plan sets, take you back to D one point two, where we're gonna be putting in that culvert. So this was shortly after, um, a storm event a couple of weeks ago. So, we, it was brought to our attention as well as we discovered while we were working on this project, that there is a significant stormwater issue in this area and it's essentially my backyard, so I've also seen it growing up. But, looking at this, there, it's essentially in the bottom of a bowl. There's no easy, straightforward, end all be all solution that's gonna fix all of the issues right now. Um, however, you can see where a lot of that water pools just to the west of that new development in that ditch. So that far, I guess, east, construction entrance up at the top of your screen does not currently have, uh, one more up. Yep, that one does not currently have a culvert in it and so all of the water coming from the west is getting backed up right there and that's where it appears to be approaching the road and sometimes topping over the road. So, that is where in our plan set, we have a culvert put in to help equalize that and allow all of the ditches on the south side to act as detention ditches until it can eventually flow under the highway to the north side. until it can eventually flow under the highway to the north side of the road and into that deal. So that's our proposed solution for keeping the water off of the highway within this project. And with that, I would like to once again thank the council and the mayor for allowing us this time. We really appreciate it, we appreciate the opportunity. I also would like to thank Teresa and Jason back here for their coordination with this and meeting with us throughout the project, answering our questions and being patient with us. We really appreciate how well they did with that, so. But that will open it up to any questions you guys may have for us.
I got one question.
Yeah.
You're going to be dumping the water on the north side of the road, where's it going to go from there?
So right now, based on the LiDAR data that we can see online, it goes, all of the water that's going that way right now goes through that field and distributes into the field and will eventually make its way into the creek that's back there. We imagine this water will do the same thing that it does. Like I said, it's not a permanent solution, it's just giving the water under the road instead of over top the road.
Well, we've had issues with it, you know, dissipating from there also, you know, from the fields.
Yep.
There's also two of those taken bottom, and that's on the north side of the road also.
Yeah, and so I would let Noah kind of talk to what that would involve, like study wise to take care of all of the water that's down there, rather than the water that's just going up the road.
As Kayla mentioned, the short-term solution is really to help the issue you're seeing on the picture that could potentially put water on Highway 175, not 71. And really, and if you look at the elevations, what's happening on the south side is that ditch fills up with water. And it's going, we're going to allow it to equalize now so that water can spread. But that water has to fill up, and then just right up from the pointer right now, if you go a little further up, there's actually a culvert, and that culvert is tipped in the wrong direction. So the culvert's actually higher on the south end than it is on the north end. However, the water flows from south to north. So that south side is a detention basin that just fills up. When it fills up enough, it's finally pushing the water north. That water's working through the field, eventually working its way out to the creek. To your comment, yes, that's going to happen, and it's really flat between there and the creek. Looking at the LiDAR, we have not collected like survey grade information, but looking at the LiDAR information that's available, it's pretty flat through that area. So during heavy rains, the more you get on the south side, the more it's going to push to the north. You are certainly still going to have similar scenarios to where that water then, after the rain event, takes a few days to dry up through that field. You're not adding the water going that direction, you're adding how quickly it can get through there to try to flush it through a little faster. We're not taking any new water, we're not going out and finding water and trying to drain any new areas. We are trying to help the water get to where it wants to go. Right now, it's finding a bottleneck, eliminate that bottleneck, help it get there a little quicker, and still get out to the creek and still operate a very similar method as it is today. Now, the long-term solution is unfortunately much more intensive and expensive, that they go together unfortunately, because as Kayla mentioned, if you look in the area, and you guys are all familiar, you live here, it does sit in the bottom of a bowl. There are, we looked at, there are some areas that potentially improvements could be done. So like right now, the campground area drains to the museum area, which then drains to the northwest to a professional building, I forget what that professional building is, you would know, and then...
The clinic.
The clinic, thank you. And then it comes down, ends up the back here. So this area collects from the west, collects from the east, collects from the south, even the water at the campground, when there's a giant lake next to it. There are some things that could potentially be looked at to do for improvement. But that would take what we would propose, and what most every engineer would propose, is they'd come in, they'd want to do a study. They'd want to see your current infrastructure, they'd want to get a map where that infrastructure is located, the size of that infrastructure, so they can really start to drill down the data on where, where we can move the water, where we can potentially take the water somewhere else. Ultimately, the lake and this drainage ditch where this ends up, they end up connecting down the road a few miles. Those, the water that comes out of the lake at the outlet ends up catching up to this water eventually down the road. So maybe you could take some of that water to the lake, instead of bringing it all to this point right now in the hole.
How long has that driveway been there?
Oh, that, that west driveway?
Yeah.
Not very long.
So did they just put that in there when they started filling that area? And how did they get away with doing that without a tile around it too there? Because they basically built a dam.
So where, where are you talking about putting the culvert at, to Noah?
Right by the pointer.
Yep.
Right up here?
Correct.
So then it would go across over here?
Yep.
So then, in the conversation that I've had with the proposed developers, I've tried to make them aware that there could be some stormwater that they have to deal with.
Especially if they're the ones that put that driveway in there, and then put a culvert in it, they're now, they're basically building a dam, the dam is up to go over the road.
Right. You mean, is it put this driveway in?
No, the next one up.
This one here?
Yep, that one is the one that does not have a tile on it. So that's why it's damming up there and going over the road more rapidly than it has in the back.
They'd have to get permission from DOT to do that, wouldn't they?
Yeah, so they should have, DOT should have had to require them to put the tile over there.
It could be classified as a temporary entrance, and the DOT didn't require the tile because it's a temporary entrance.
Which probably would be a conversation we need to have with them.
Well, the current culvert is, that's the wrong way you said, right?
The one that goes under the highway.
To the north goes the wrong way, but eventually gets the water to the north.
Yeah, once the water builds up enough in the south, it should actually.
Well, yeah, because there's so much water there, it's, yeah, it's...
I don't read this very good, they're not putting the fire hydrants in the ditch or, you know?
No, I looked at that.
No. Trust me, I looked. The manholes are not in the ditch either.
One, one question I do have for you. On the dead end, I'm going to call it the west end where dead ends.
Yep.
10 plus 00, if I'm reading correctly, on page 1.1. Isn't straight across the north, don't we have another water main over there? Or isn't there a water main over there now? Or a water line over there?
Should be right up.
My question for you, Kayla, is if this was a project we move forward on like that, would it be best to also tee that back over that so it's not a dead end for circulating water? Is that what would occur about from some of these other projects?
You're supposed to have a continual loop and as many dead ends eliminated as possible.
Yep, so there is a recording of the survey, it's really hard to see. I can't see the north part of this, or have to give back to you on that part of it, if I look back.
Isn't this driveway, is this the driveway that goes to...
To Poots's.
To Poots's? And I think there's a fire hydrant right in there somewhere.
I don't think there is.
I don't know.
Farther.
That's farther west yet?
Yeah.
Hey, I think that might be the Dollar General.
The closest water line would be the dead end at Dollar General right there. The main that serves Dollar General.
However, we serve at Poots's.
We don't.
We don't?
We don't.
They're not connected.
Okay. Maybe that's what they're serving.
So that's why it's not a, that's why it's not tied in for a continual loop.
This is our lift, this is a lift station.
That's a lift station right there. And the closest fire hydrant, if you go to where the new storage sheds are, and you go probably 100 feet past that, in that ditch line, other side, other side of the road.
North side. North side of the road.
Keep going up, on the other side of the drive.
It's like a cross in the car wash.
Up or down?
Keep going, like right in there is where that fire hydrant is.
Okay, is that a dead end then?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, it's not really a dead end, it's, it ties off, that water line comes down by the Sparkies and everything right down through there and ties in. So it shoots that way, it doesn't dead end, but that's where we're going to have to tie off of for this water main project, which would eliminate a dead end going towards Dollar General. If that makes sense?
So where the pointer is right now, somewhere in there, there's a water fire hydrant.
Correct.
And then, does that, does that water main come that direction where she moved it now?
No.
It comes to the east.
It goes towards Evaco.
Okay.
So there's no water main on this side of the road?
No. And that's the sewer manhole.
Eventually there is, but it's all the way over by Poots's, right?
Yeah.
And this is the Dollar General driveway, you know?
It is, okay. So that, so I could go across and tie into the Dollar General one then. And then, we have our waste water here.
So we tie in and bring it this way. And that sewer manhole that they're talking about tying in is like right in that location right there.
So if we pin through this driveway hypothetically, to get water and sewer that way, or water, we'd have to tie into where the car wash is tied into? Where's the car wash been from?
From the backside. We'd have to run a giant...
On the south side?
Yeah, we'd have to run a giant service line.
From there?
From there going towards his units. Which, and if he does any more expansions, running a one-inch water line that far is... We're shooting ourselves.
So, great, so I've... Did, Kayla, did you look at all that staying on the south side of the highway and coming through that new 12-inch main that goes out to Evaco?
So that you're not doing services underneath of the highway?
Right, yeah, we would not have to go underneath 175, and we would just come west on the south side of 175.
If we did the main that way though, anytime anybody had to, to sign on to services, they would be, their service line would be boring under the road. And then, where would we put the curb stop and those different things?
But Dale's talking bringing the water down Third Street behind Sparkies and the Vet Clinic, and bringing it back down that way, not dealing with 175 anymore.
Well, yeah, bringing it this way, bringing it this way.
I'm talking about tying into that new 12-inch main up here and coming straight down this way. We have a new 12-inch main that goes underneath 175, right up here at this corner, and we could come straight down this way.
I think we didn't look at that because of the extra feat of pipe that it's going to take. The, the cost of the extra feat.
It comes across up... It goes across for the Evaco and it's to the east of Sparkies.
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah, it's east of Third Street down there, because that's...
Right, because I think we talked, we think we talked about that in, we decided that this was potentially the better route to take. But...
So that's not something we had looked at?
That was my question.
Right, yeah. Well, and it was a matter of what size is that pipe that goes across? Because that's a pretty, that's, that extension out to Evaco is a much larger...
It's a 12-inch.
It's 12-inch, so you'd almost, you don't want to put a 12-inch all the way down there.
No, but you could...
No, you can reduce it down.
Right, you can reduce it down. The only other thing is, is the line that, you know, how are you impacting Evaco that way?
That line is only for their sprinkler system.
Right. And I understand, yeah.
So it doesn't affect your thousand... I did, I, I, but anyway, I was just thinking of an alternative solution. What did, what did that cost us to run that water line up there? 30% more than the engineer's estimate, but was it 700,000, is that correct?
16,000.
Was it, was it 550?
I don't remember, I don't know.
700.
700.
I think the engineer's estimate was 550, they ended up getting like 700.
And these guys were smart too, they added 20% in.
So we've got other engineers.
I've got faith in these guys.
I do too, don't get me wrong, that's an inside joke. We had like four bids come in, 30% higher than the engineer's estimate.
I mean, we can certainly, I mean, potentially, this is what their scope of the project, if it, if it's something that we maybe want to move forward with, we can certainly have them look at that possibility of just bringing that, you know, an extension off of that Evaco main. I think, I think we're talking about, you know, this was the, I thought would maybe the lesser of a couple of...
It is, it's one of the correct ways to do the project at a minimal cost compared to, I think if we go up to that, I think we're going to add probably quite a bit more money onto the project. Because we're going to have to bore under Sparkies, we're going to have to bore under the Vet, and the car wash area, boring's not cheap. As far as cost-wise, that's why I believe me and Teresa decided to talk about tying it off that fire hydrant and coming under 175 and not going directly down.
So does this, does this sheet show the, because you, one of you guys mentioned it's expensive to go underneath the state highway. Where's that at on this sheet?
So under Division 5, the water main trench, that $85 linear foot is the, just the standard trench one, and then right underneath of that, that water main with the casing pipe, the $725 linear foot, that is the old, the casing and the 600.
Back to the water of the highway. This is the highway. This is, the 79,000 is the standard.
We certainly could go back and do the math and probably do it on the fly. I wonder if that's what you're doing there, like how many feet from Sparkies? I will say, and I'm not trying to justify anything at all, as you go by Sparkies, there is a thing in Iowa called bus sites, leaky underground storage tanks. Likely candidate, I about guarantee you they will qualify because they're an active gas station, and when you get into that, you're looking at potential contaminated soils, and what that does is it's not undoable. But in that case, you'd be looking at likely a nitrile gasket or an FKM gasket. It's just the gasket that goes on the pipe, and you no longer typically can go with PVC pipe. A lot of times you'll be forcing a ductal pipe as you go past those underground storage sites. So there is a geographic information system the DNR has out there that shows the area of the plume, they call it, that we would have to install those materials to get around that basically with potable water.
Is there a certain footage from the takes?
It all depends on what they've sampled in the past. They create the plume maps, and the plume maps do not make sense.
Okay.
So when you look at them, they literally will jog and do things that, they've done soil testing, and that's how they identify how far the contamination has made it. So again, it, sometimes it's not as scary as it sounds, and sometimes it can be pretty terrible, so. It just adds cost, it's not undoable, you can still build, it just adds cost to your materials.
You guys did a great job, by the way.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions for them, or they...
Is any part of this, that, the culvert that's not correct, it's made in the wrong way, is that part of the scope also in the fix center, or is that a separate?
It is not, that would be separate. Right now, it's still flowing under the highway one, like in this event, it was flowing under the highway still once it built up enough. It's not a huge elevation difference the way it is right now, I think it's a few inches. Yeah, it's not, it's not a huge difference, so no, that's not in this.
This is just the water main and sewer main, right?
And that one hole.
Sanitary sewer, and the one hole.
Yep. Yep.
So just one question. Where, is that one culvert that you're talking about going through that temporary drive, is that the culvert you're talking about?
Yes.
Where is that on here?
Under Division 4. The, that item 4, corrugated metal pipe.
24 inch.
Yep.
Division 4, number 4.
Yeah. Thank you.
Wait, wait, thank you guys.
Good luck.
Thank you all.
Appreciate it, thank you all, thank you. You understand where I'm at, though?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
175, I remember that.
Kayla.
Yeah.
You bet, thank you.
Okay, we're going to have the reasons here, and I'm going to go through the highs. Assuming we have some counseling with the question? Assuming we have some council member to question?
You're a bunch of come up.
Please do. Good evening. My understanding that the other meeting you came in and you had this discussion with Scott, and you said you thought your house roof was at 16 feet?
I didn't say that, he guessed that.
He guessed?
He guessed that, because I had no clue, I brought in the drawing to begin with.
Yeah.
All I had was my length and my width. And he said, well, you need a height on it, and I said, well, how do you determine how high that's gonna be? I guess I don't know. And he said, well, you have to remain under the height of your roof and the average of, like, he said, probably where you're at, your roof is probably about 16. So we just tried to say...
Because we've had this at your booth, and we've discussed this through many different building permits. A standalone garage has to be under 16 feet.
Scott's pretty good about that.
Yeah, I mean, I, he stopped me from doing it, he stopped several other garages within the community from, from...
Building too high.
Buildings taller than 16 feet. And then we come into that position of the chousage, and we, I had the living quarters, and that's a whole nother issue. Yeah, this, this height limit 16 feet has been... Quite a while.
It says on your permit, 11 feet.
11, no, I thought it was higher than that, I thought we put it like at 15 and three quarters, which would just be underneath, and, uh...
Height at 11 feet. Another story is one.
And the drawing that is showing the pitch of the roof is like a four wall, you got, I don't know what it is on, a 12 wall?
Yeah, I'll just try to match it up close to the house.
It looks very nice.
It does look very nice, I, I will make that comment, it does look very nice. But we still have the issue of, you know, doing it and then asking forgiveness later is... It, it, it's gonna continue on, other people, ladies, why can't we do it?
Then we've had some residents come to us, that's actually how it got to our attention. And if we don't do something, so my question we have to have you, we talked at the last meeting, you know, you can attach it to your house, with a, just a roof line or breezeway or whatever, have you talked about that?
I guess we, we haven't really talked about it because we didn't know option wise, um, like the one door from the garage is here and the other is over here. So what kind of an attachment will we have to put on that in order to make that part of the home accessible?
Well, that was a, that was one thing we talked about in the last house, you're here, you know, with the big breezeway or roof line or attach it somehow. I thought, when I drove by, it looked like both peaks kind of looked like they were in line with each other.
They're, they're close, they're not like perfect, um, I think when, um...
I'm just trying to discuss an how to make everything work properly instead of trying to make the garage shorter.
Okay, um, but it has to be a roof, has to be a roof, it can't be like... Gazebo type, or a building type thing, I guess that's what we need to know from you guys, is it has to be...
Would you say gazebo type thing, I'm not sure.
Like a, like a, whatever, like a pergola type of a thing, if they were to connect it between the two, are you talking a solid roof? Or if they were to make, you know, so that they still had sun coming through or something that would attach from...
I think it's a substantially attached, but it doesn't actually say roof, it just has to be attached.
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 Blue veins.
A legged deck, is a deck attached?
A deck would...
I just think that, while you're looking at this, that's just my opinion, I'm sure it's not one. But I just think you're, you're gonna... That solution doesn't sound very good to me, only because when you visualize it, it's not gonna look good.
Well, I, I'm not disagreeing with that, I'm just trying to give them, I'm trying to throw options out for an easy out. When somebody built uncompliance and not even close to what the building permit was submitted. So, we approved the building permit, it was not built according to the building permit, we have codes, and as us sitting on the council, I'll, as me sitting on a council, I'm elected to this council and took the oath, took forth our codes.
Right.
We have a code, we, it needs to be followed, do I agree with the height limit? Probably not. But, we've had that discussion with planning and zoning, they have their reasons for it, they changed it from 15 to 16 probably four years ago, to help with a 412 pitch on a two-car drive, if I remember right. That's what needed to be Chris Brothers', uh, that got that, if I remember that correctly, but anyway, it all went from 15 to 16. And I'm just trying to think of an easy way instead of making, redoing the roof, making it lower, something like that.
I get that, I just think, you know, make it look worse than already.
If we let it go, Vicki, we have opened up a can of worms.
Well, we had that open a long time.
We need to put a stop to it.
Because we enforce ordinances every once in a while. We're not consistent, we have a lot of ordinances down, we don't follow them now. You're incoming for permission, begging forgiveness, we can, Scott told you you could do that, is that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, but I don't think Scott would have told them they could build an 18-foot pipe if he'd have had the correct information, I will defend Scott on that, and, and I'm gonna stand on that, so, sorry to disagree.
The garage was finished when Scott was there.
What's that?
When Scott was still here, we had that garage finished, that garage has been up for quite some time.
I, I don't know when it was finished, I know Scott is pretty good about telling people, we have a height limit, and the Peters Brothers, did Peters Brothers build this for you?
No, my son and my husband, they'll say.
Okay, so... Peters Brothers was the contractor on the building, right?
Yes, and they are, they did all the work on the house and reframing the house.
Okay, so, if your husband and son, son-in-law?
Son.
Son. Knew that our height limit is 16 foot, and they're building 18 foot, I've done a lot of construction, my friend's done a lot of construction, so these other people, you know how high stuff is.
And I will go to the point where they haven't built a lot of things, neither one of them have. Um, it's, was a hugely expensive project to do this over here, we thought we would save some money by doing this. Scott and I got along great through this whole thing, we visited through everything. I felt like we were going by the rules he said. I'm in, I'm in the wrong with that, that I didn't, we didn't measure that it was 16 foot.
Oh, excuse me, there's another place down here, it says height of the peak is 15 feet three.
Right, that's accessory garage, the separate accessory garage.
Because I have the peak of the other one, it's 11 feet.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, I, I would like to see you guys visit, look at some options, and come back in the next council meeting to have a resolution besides leaving it at 18 feet six inches. Is that the proper height?
Eighteen.
It was eight, I think it was measured at 18 feet, yes.
That's, that's my recommendation.
Okay.
I don't know what the rest of the council is thinking.
Let's see what they have to come up with.
So, my question is, if they put living quarters in it, like, is that, is that just as cheap? I mean...
This law's a 750 square feet, or 700 square feet?
And there is 700 foot in the garage, I mean, we could, we had talked about that too, sectioning off the section of that garage and putting a kitchenette in there. But then we would gotta come back to and get all our permits to run sewer and electricity out there and everything else, so... Kind of have to dig everything up to do that, so... It's, it's gonna be expensive either way.
It's too bad.
Do you have a councilman have an opinion?
Well, I, I kinda wanna argue with you about Scott's deal, because I know three different things where Scott said, go ahead and do it, and the homeowners got hung on it. And I can drive you around to those. So I just feel bad that we got a, a couple that's moved it down and made a beautiful, beautiful home, and we're, and now we're gonna beat them up on this, there's gotta be a simple, easy way that we can do this, I think. Was it right? No, it's not right, but it's also how long we go after the fact.
I just been catching a lot of grief, I'm just...
When was the garage completed?
We bought the house in 2000, do you remember what year we bought it? It was in November of 19, we started in 21.
It's been about two years, the garage's been...
Oh, it's been a very...
Well, your building permit's dated 516 and 22.
Okay, so 22, so we bought it in November of 21 then.
And the other one, the other one is...
And then Joe started, Joe and Josh started in the spring on the garage back behind. So if you almost all summer, did you have?
It was completed in 22?
Probably, yeah, fall, fall of 22, you might not have sighted it until 23, but the structure went out.
So does the building inspector, health inspector?
So we're like two years after the fact. So my mind, we gotta eat this one.
So I'm sorry.
I apologize for that, but I mean, it's been two years, they had the project completed, and now somebody's...
It hasn't been completed for two years, I know that, but you...
The back garage?
Yeah.
The front, none of the front stuff has been done, or the garage addition hasn't, but the very first thing, the project that we got done, before Todd and Brent even started on our house. Or right around the time they started on our house was in April, because Joe and Josh were asking them several questions about, you know, do we have this right, or do we have that right? So we started in the spring after...
So you would have started in the spring of 22 and finished it, would you say you had it? Because I don't know, I mean, I've noticed, I guess, when I started in July, I mean, you've done the, the, you've done the fencing, did you, added the siding and stuff, is that when you did the, the room addition, or, I mean, when did you...
So, the very beginning, we bought it in November, in the spring, in April, Todd and Brent started working on the house. And was it right then that Kurt poured the concrete back there? Right around the same time we worked at the house, we were like, one of his first projects, and he poured the concrete out back.
For the garage?
Yeah, for the back garage.
The one that we're talking about?
Yes.
Okay.
And then Joe and Josh worked on that almost all summer long.
Okay.
And then, um, did you think it unsighted that first year?
No, I think we did that siding on it.
Yeah, because we didn't do the rest of the siding on the house till the next year.
So where was our building inspector during this time?
I don't know, it was before I got here. So, the majority of all of this construction happened before I, I arrived on scene, so I have no input, unfortunately.
It's a shame we didn't wanna punish you for doing something, we've done it for a couple of years, and all of a sudden we're gonna change it, it's wrong.
What about, I'm just throwing out my idea here. That needed compliance, at five monetary... To the... We gotta do something to the fact that, otherwise, I understand what Dale's saying, is, if we don't do anything, then everybody's gonna ask for forgiveness.
Well, I mean, it says down here, "Construction which deviates from an approved building permit shall be brought into compliance, or issues of non-compliance may be cited as a municipal infraction, with a maximum of a $750 fine for the first offense and $1,000 fine for each repeat offense."
Is that what you're charged for not having sidewalks put in, at your building house, is that what you're gonna charge them with the same for that?
Each day a violation continues to exist may constitute a repeat offense, so that depends on how, I mean...
Just something to talk about, that's what I'm just...
So I always, just, this, just, I've always wondered about those two twin towers up there on those state roads, they look awfully high to me, are they in code?
No, they aren't.
They aren't.
And what did they do?
And, and we brought that to Scott and the mayor's...
We brought that to the intention of the council.
Council.
And the council overruled us and said, we gotta wait till they're done before we can do anything.
We don't have to look back, that's stupid.
It just doesn't, that doesn't seem fair. It calculates these people, those places haven't been up there, have they ever been there too yet?
Now, the what, the what, the one twin tower did, and we'd have to, so the measurement goes off the average grade. And the one twa, top, we call them the twin towers, everybody does, I guess, built up their grade on the one side of their house to the other side. The one, he can drive by and look at it.
So if you build up your grade on your garage out back, and then you measure off of that, that takes it down 16 foot?
They've done that more than once.
Yeah, it's measured from grade.
It is measured from the other grade.
The guy that, that bought the house out there, Terry's, Earl's.
Yeah.
Came out with that deck too far, and he built up the grade.
Yeah.
So that's an option.
There are solutions here. Because there's sidewalks that never went in, heck, there, when I built that first house, I didn't put a sidewalk back in because it didn't even go all the way, and I didn't even know I was supposed to put a sidewalk in, till after we put that verb in. And then they said, one of the council members said, you know, really, you were supposed to put a sidewalk back in, I said, well, they never told us, or we probably would have. So I made sure with this house, I put a sidewalk in.
And people parked on the neighbors.
Yeah, they did.
Whatever.
And maybe we should go after those people now too, I mean, here's a building since your house, we can go after you, buddy. No.
Limit of statute of tasks.
So what, we're building up, I mean, what part of the ordinance says you can't build up your foundation?
It's just not fair to do it to those people and not do it to those people, because they were the same time.
I guess we just will not enforce any rules, let's get rid of the codes.
Get rid of the codes.
We're just supposed to get rid of the code, because the twin towers gets away with it. The other people's getting away with it, and we got people that are following codes, just a minute, because this, I'll go back to you, when I tried to build my second chousage, I fought all kinds of heck, and you guys implemented design standard rules. And I, we talked about, and my first one, and, and it met every design standard you put into play.
The first chousage.
Yes, it does, go down there today.
Yeah, it does today, it did not, so I'm not gonna go back over that.
Right, so you hounded me for that, when I cleaned up three different crappy garages and a house that had no foundation, and you didn't like what I built there when I cleaned that up. Then I went to build the second one, and you guys fought me on that, but I followed every code and everything properly.
I didn't fight you on that.
Yes, you did.
No, I didn't.
Honey, yes, you did.
No, I didn't.
So...
I said...
So now, if we're gonna do this...
We're gonna do this. You guys wanna fight this out, fight it out on your own?
Let's get rid of the codes.
Totally different deal, alright? We can sit here and say, let's get rid of the codes, but if nobody's enforcing what they're doing now to begin with, we have to figure it out. This is two years down the line, the codes got rid of two years ago, so whose fault was it two years ago that this thing get monitored and caught? Alright, if we're sitting here now, we're saying, we know the twin towers has got a mess over there, well, why the heck aren't they in here too, sitting and going through this?
We've brought that up before.
So, I mean, we can continue to bring it up, but if nothing ever gets done, then what do we do? So now what do we need to do moving forward? Do we need a building inspector that's gonna pay attention to the building and inspect it as it's going so that it gets done? That would help probably, wouldn't it? Okay, so now who do we punish for that? Do we punish us? Do we punish these people who just built a beautiful home where they're at too? You know, the same thing with the towers, who do we punish for that? Now, we wait until it's done and they're moved in, and now you gotta go in, and you wanna knock two feet off the bottom of their house? I don't know how to fix that, but you two arguing for 15 minutes about what happened, how many years ago on your thing, is not what we need to do here in this regard at all.
I just have a point that, we have codes, some people follow them.
Understood, but why is just, why are just these guys standing here right now?
We have also somebody in this room that says, go ahead and build whatever you want, because nobody's gonna come back and look at it anyway. He'd be sitting around this side of the table. We don't check up on anybody.
Nobody checks up, and that's what the problem is right now.
So that's the problem that needs to be fixed.
That's the problem.
We need to fix that problem.
You need a building inspector, but, and I'm not faulting Eric, because he's probably doing what he was hired to do, but, you know...
So we need to, we need to add some steps to the building inspection. To fix the problem that these people had, and...
So that they find out before it's done.
Bales or whatever, we just need to add more steps to...
We need to change the scope of this job.
Yeah.
But if we punish these people, it seems unrealistic.
But I don't, and, and I agree, we should not punish somebody for our shortcomings of, of the building inspection. Not that it was his fault.
And again, if we start here, then we just will get aligned, because there's gonna be a bunch of them that we need to go after on the same one.
We just need, we, again, adding more steps to that process, I think, could fix it, don't you think?
Yeah, well, it's definitely on an agenda, yes.
So... Let's move on. So, let's move on. So that problem doesn't come up by us like it is today.
So what council act should we wanna do for these people?
Not that my opinion matters, but to go back, like, first thing I heard Dale say was, "Somebody brought it up to me, now it's a problem." Well, like Jim said, if somebody brought it up to you, Dale, then what about all the other people? They shouldn't be in here by themselves. So, I'd go back two years ago and say, if they said they were fine, there was no building inspector to say different, you let them go now. Otherwise, if you're gonna punish them, you need to go around town and punish everyone. Just cause someone said something about them, doesn't mean that they should be punished right now, everyone else should as well.
And how far should we go back?
Exactly, you can't, so now you fix a wrong by.
Changing the.
Fix it now and then move forward.
You have to train the building inspector to do what he needs to do, moving forward. You can't punish someone, especially on hearsay, when you don't know, and you can't argue back and forth. That's very unprofessional, and you just can't do that, so.
I think we ought, some sort of a council motion, we just allow it, and we move on.
I'm gonna make that a motion, we're gonna allow this, uh, to, and move on from this, and fix it. And then, uh, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second the motion.
Go call.
Walton?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Frank?
No.
Beckman?
No.
Stankin?
Yes.
We're gonna move on.
Thank you. Sorry for the inconvenience, it's a beautiful home, beautiful, everything looks very nice.
No, I understand, I understand. Thank you.
We need to set up a priority though, and, for the standards, what, what our follow-up should be. We gotta make a.
For the inspection.
That's what we're gonna do now.
The next thing is discussion on building application form changes.
Yeah, but I'm just saying that, we gotta be.
How, how are we gonna?
I mean, so, so, I mean, a couple, a couple of options in what I've stated, is, you make changes to the building inspection, but I feel that if you do that, then we need to send somebody, if you're going to go to the criteria that we are, or, or you want to go to, the layout, building height, making sure they're doing what they're doing, having it give it, the project get visited multiple times during that project scope, then we need to send Eric or somebody off to be a certified building inspector. Or, we hire a third-party contractor to come in and do all of our building inspections, also along with the building permit. You're going to lengthen the process, but then you have, now have somebody that's certified to be able to look at all these height, you know, all of the, everything that you're, you know, cause height just isn't the issue here. It's, it's a lot of different things, you know, that I've heard in the last year, that we seem to have issues with going against our building code. So one, you either change the building code to be less than what it is, or, we then go to the steps of certifying somebody to do the job that you're wanting them to do, and it's, it's gotta be more than what we're currently doing. I don't know what that cost is, I haven't checked into it, but that is my recommendation, is if you're going to want to do more than what we're doing, is then, then we might as well go to the steps of making somebody certified, then there's a backbone against it, that, you know, it's not just somebody going out and taking the measurements and whatever.
Well, it doesn't matter what steps we make, if we don't enforce it, and we have people telling people, "Just do what you're gonna do, we're gonna change it anyway, it ain't gonna matter." We, this is our third building inspector in the last six, ten years, eight years? And I have a son-in-law, that's got emails saying, "No, just let him do it." So, we gotta have a backbone.
And I, 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 I don't, and I don't have any training to that information, right?
So it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter who you, it doesn't matter who you send to school, it ain't gonna matter who, what kind of certified guy you get in here, if we just say, "Let him do it."
Well, I'm not the one who's saying, "Let them do it," so.
We need to visit more than one time, you can't just start building, then never go back.
We discussed, we discussed that at one other meeting, I thought that was supposed to be three visits, this was back when Scott was here.
Two, I believe.
Two.
Two? You wanted to get in one idea?
We made one in the middle.
Well, yeah, I mean.
Do you remember what it was?
I mean, it needs to be.
On the, on the letters that are sent out to people, it says two.
Well, is it part of the confirming the actual measurements, or something? I mean, they're just written down, right, and it's kind of a test, would it be part of it, be having somebody go out to confirm what the height they were?
Obviously, no secret on the towers, everybody from the day they started putting those things up, we go, "My, what, there's no way."
Well, then you also need to change the at-grade.
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, if you have to measure from peak to at-grade, you can't do that until it's, at-grade is finished.
Sure.
So, then you, you've changed.
We'll have to raise the cost of inspection, and go back more than one or two times, it's just.
Well, that also can include raising the cost of your building permit.
Right.
Which, you know, in a sense, is probably too low anyway, with the amount of dollars that they're putting on a.
I think there's several things that need to be adjusted, I think the one of the grade is one. When you're four feet, six inches from your property line, you're not sure where your pins are, that, then you need a survey needs to be done. Or the property lines, because we're infringing on, we had the Blossom Street issue, you know.
Well, the average, and the average yard setback too, I think is, can be a frustrating one for some of them, cause we ran into it just the other day, is when somebody starts a project, and they look and see what the setback is, well, no one's done a measurement, until the building inspector's looked at it to find an average yard setback. So then I had to contact the builder that basically told them on average yard setback, "Well, you're gonna be, you're, you're, you're not needing the set, setback, well, I'm, I'm at twelve feet, well, that's not the average yard setback, because now it's fifteen feet." And so they've gotta move their property.
That average has been, forever, I've been against that and fought against that, but, because, just like bad cocks out on North State Road, when they put their house way, way back, that changes everybody's setback, because you're doing an average. So you can have that on any street, they set their house way back, it changes everybody's setback. So it's just, it's a, that is a problem.
Yeah, we, we actually had planning and zoning come in last year or the year before, and revisit that, and they changed it from, however far it went, down to like two hundred and fifty feet for the average, but they were pretty adamant, that group was pretty adamant about not changing the average front yard setback. I'm with you, Vicky, I disagree with that rule, but that's the personal rule that I disagree with.
We got that on Lake Street, that's going on right now, Danny Garland sits way back, and the next one's out here, it analyzes the guy that wants the front yard compared to the guy that wants the back here.
So, so what I'm hearing is, it seems like we have a lot of things that maybe we need to go over, and one probably starts with planning and zoning, and maybe it's a joint, um, meeting with, you know, a work session with council, and going over the planning and zoning code, um, potential on discussion of, of trying to change or improve our inspection process.
Well, we can, we can change the inspection process pretty easily tonight, and then, because it's on the agenda, we can make three visits.
Three or four.
Or four. Three gonna do it, though.
Well, that's what I'm saying, three or four.
Well, and what, and so if you're making three visits, what, what's the criteria for them to look at in those three visits?
Well, the, the biggest thing that we've got is side yard setback and height setback, they're where the.
Right.
It's the, your setbacks and your height is a big issue that we have.
Somebody needs to go back and confirm those, and they just want staring at a couple of defays before they're.
When the, when the rough framing is up, you can see, you figure that pretty easy. Right, and then it's stopped.
So are we saying that, that then we incorporate that into the building permit that says, "They must call at these points for an inspection," versus us just, hey, you know, just checking it out? So, you can't, you almost have to have your builder call, stop their work, call and have it inspected before they can continue working.
Cause that happens a lot, it's not, it's towns our size, but we're getting to that point.
We have to pay your rate for each visit more, we are in the.
I think the building has to, they have to be held accountable, or you're gonna have instances like this every time, and you have to.
Well, you're gonna, you're gonna have to, you, you are, for a hundred dollar building permit, for a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, down in various areas, that's gonna cost you a minimum of twenty-five hundred dollars, um, you know, in, in Carroll and those different things. So, I'm not saying that we have to go to that extreme, but I think your hundred dollar building permit for some of these properties, you know, either you base it on square footage, you base it on valuation, or something to that extent, yeah. I, I don't wanna penalize the person that's putting on a two thousand dollar deck, you know, to have to, you know.
We don't need to go out four times.
So you can vary the cost based on.
Right.
Right.
But there, we gotta have something that says that just suddenly this house is, is two foot taller than it's.
Well, we need more than a one-page application, well, we got more, but, I mean, it's, you gotta amplify, emphasize more on the contractor, the engineer, you know, size the rafter, because once they put that first rafter up, and we go out and measure it, and it's one foot over the limit, they got thirty rafters to them here.
Well, and that's, and that's what I'm saying, to the extent of where do you want to go, and I'm, you know, I was a county assessor for five years, and I could go out, and I could take measurements, and I could do height, and I could do a lot of different things. But as far as knowing what your rafter size was, I didn't necessarily know that, and I took a lot of classes being a county assessor in construction. So where, that's where you say, at what point do you, you go beyond being a building, a, a simple building inspector, and then you have to go to the next step of the knowledge base of knowing, you know, you can put all that information in the building permit, but unless you know what it's all about, it necessarily means nothing.
But it's just like these Hewls that were just here, they put a, I don't know what the pitch is for sure, it was six or eight twelve, if they would've put a four twelve pitch on it, they would've been underneath their sixteen-foot height.
But they wanted to match what, what the look of the house was, so then, it looked beautiful, and it would've, it would've looked goofy at a different, at a different pitch, quite honestly.
Uh, it wouldn't have looked goofy with a different pitch, but it, it, it does look nice, I, I agree with that ten times. You know, they're kind of all too, why didn't they put the big pitch on it when they could've went to a four twelve, which is standard around.
What, so, back to the building permit changes that we're visiting about.
What do we wanna do tonight?
Well, I, I think we need to make a motion that, until we change the price of the building permit cost to two hundred bucks or whatever it may be, we need to have more visits by the building inspector, and he gets paid so much a visit, I know, and, and maybe make sure people call in, it's rough frame, they haven't started putting sheeting on yet, you know, before sheeting goes on, so we can get that height thing in the side yards. But one, I, I'm sitting here thinking about the average height, you know, right now we measure up the grade, and we've gotta get that figured out, because if you can raise the grade, or lower the grade, and change the height of the building.
You could raise your footing, you could have a six-foot spout wall in the back and.
Yeah, we gotta come up with the right terminology for that, and I don't know what that is, because there's so many different. I was thinking about going off the floor, where you can, if you go off the floor, that ain't even good either. Cause you could raise your floor up if you want a higher building, and let, you wanna be, the ground be down. That's, that's where I'm hung up, I, I definitely think we need to have surveys done, surveys done for, when it's close to property lines, and I don't know if it's two foot, three foot.
I can go around and I, I can try to find some other building codes that talk about height, and how they work it.
Yeah.
Um, and see what they say about, you know.
But until we make them final changes, I'll make the motion, we raise the amount of visits, until we go up to at least three, if not four, to help curb this before it gets to.
Depending on scope.
Yeah.
Depending on scope of project.
Yeah.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that motion.
Go call.
Beckman?
Yes.
Beckman?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Stankin?
Yes.
And we're gonna give this morning information for next council meeting, I'm. Okay, we have to consider street closure for the corral.
I'll make the motion, look good, uh.
Second?
I'll second it.
Go call.
Frank?
Yes.
Stankin?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Beckman?
Yes.
Do we have a software update for the PD?
Yeah, what we're asking, so what's it do? What was that on top?
What does it do?
So it's transcription, basically if we're in an interview, and we have our body worn cameras on, it would actually transcribe all that, all the talking, it would break it down into actually like a Word document, that would cut down, let's say, time on our report writing. Cause what I wanna do is try to get them out of the office as much as we can, so they could be out on patrol. So it cut our report writing down in half, pretty much, also would make us better report writers, because we'll have quotes, and pretty much every little thing that everybody says, right on the computer. Also, they use it as a legal document, so when we download our body worn cameras to court, that transcription will also go to court, and will be used for a legal document for court purposes, for convictions, so.
Is that like serious, she puts the wrong word in sometimes?
No, it's, it's a lot better, it's, uh, the software, the county uses it, um, so I've been, um, around it for a little bit of time, and, uh, to be honest, we like to steal their body worn cameras or have them on scene, cause again, it cuts down our report writing basically in half.
Is this a thousand eighty-three thirty-six per year for formal?
Yes, sir.
I make the motion, we approve that.
Second?
Second.
Go call.
Beckman?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Stankin?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
The chief wants to have a great Russell to the.
As a part-time?
Yes, so, um, we need help this out on border carnival, he's been certified for six years with, uh, DNR. Also, um, does reserve with Pocahontas County, uh, so he's got a lot of experience, um, plus, he'll be fully certified. So if we, let's say, have him working a shift that we could actually take vacation for, cause right now we're kinda limited, we can't take a day off without paying somebody overtime, so I think bringing in a part-timer will cut down costs for, instead of us paying somebody around forty-five dollars or above to fifty dollars an hour, having a part-timer come in and just cover our bases, would probably be the best bet. And again, they'll be fully certified, so if it comes down to an OWI, um, kinda like reserves, they can't do applied consent. So I don't have to worry about anything, they could do everything themselves, so.
Where's he live at?
He lives up in, in between, uh, well. Yeah, Villarreal and Newell, so I forgot exactly which, what town. But we're, so this would cover our bases, so what I'm trying to do is cut down on, on call time. So, if there is any emergencies, obviously I'm always available, so him being out of town, we're only gonna use him for pretty much events, and then whenever anybody calls out sick, there's no minimum hours that I have to give him, um, so it's just gonna be an on-need basis.
And we're actually reducing someone else's hours, so this would maybe help us in different areas.
Correct.
With that, as far as trying to get a reserve officer down to where they're actually.
Supposed to be.
Running, yeah, running reserve hours, and then this might help us a little bit with, um, some of those times where we, we need some extra help.
Correct, right now the schedule, I'm probably gonna be averaging around a hundred and five hours per pay period, uh, which is a lot, but it is what it is, it's not tough to do it. Um, but if we wanna take a vacation, instead of having somebody burnt out, I think having a certified guy come in, instead of paying somebody overtime, or risking that, to have somebody else burnt out, um, I think having a part-timer just in case, and on an on-needed basis would probably be the best bet.
The motion approved resolution twenty-four dash twenty-eight.
I'll make it.
I'll second.
Go call.
Stankin?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Beckman?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Twenty twenty-four dash twenty-nine, seven, seven city property.
So, um, this is the, the resolution to, um, go ahead with the, the property down there, by the regular property, to deal with that, um, nuisance, in a sense, this is the, the, the resolution that I received from Dave, um, it's got built in, uh, the minimum price point that you had wanted on there, and it includes, I think, um, another fifteen hundred dollars to, for removal of the concrete, that would be taking care of that nuisance property. So this would basically start that process.
Can I make a motion?
I'll second.
For that.
You'll second.
Go call.
Mike, please, second. Mike, will you second? You second. Beckman.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Walton.
Yes.
Walton.
We have a agreement with the DOT for highway maintenance?
Yeah, and this is pretty, the standard agreement that we've done in the past. It basically is our agreement with the DOT to do, um, road maintenance and it, and it's basically for this non-renewal piece of it, and they're willing to pay us, um, at the rate of 2,000 per lane mile per year, um, which would be not quite $14,000.
The motion approved, so we'll... Second? Rule call.
I can't see Mike, will you second? I can't see you with the...
You can move it now.
I know. Walton?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Beckman?
Yes.
You want to move that case, you might second again.
Right, could you just stand up taller and then speak louder?
Okay, general insurance review, hooker.
Okay, so I literally got this in the last couple of weeks, even though our anniversary date was on July 1st. So basically, this is the approval to get our renewal paid, um, at the amount of $93,284. I did waive any additional, um, liability insurance for this year. Um, we can look at it for next year and maybe try and incorporate it into the budget so we can anticipate knowing that we might want to add, you know, some additional liability insurance in there. So, um, I'm just asking approval so that we can get them paid and get a check off for our liability.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
This Mike.
Please second him.
Mike, you second.
Mike, you second, that's all.
Mike.
Frank.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Walton.
Yes.
Beckman.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Okay, consideration for pay application number four, send to construction.
Um, so this is, you know, fairly self, um, just, just pay up a payment for it because we've been on the project.
Motion approved, so...
Will second.
Rule call.
Walton?
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Frank?
No.
Beckman?
Yes.
Okay, we have the inspection reports reviewed from Kim.
There's really no approval process, this is, I pretty much put this in the package just so that you're aware of what B and K has been working on and doing, um, in regards to the community center project, so...
So with our last little incident, we need to make sure that they're inspecting this properly.
And I, I mean, I'll talk to them, I...
Yeah, with no wind and the rafters going down, obviously they're cutting corners.
Um, my, my conversation with both the contractor and with, um, B and K today was, uh, they realized that there wasn't any winds. The conversation with the four men on site was that the scissor lift had difficulty trying to reach the peak to maybe put some extra nails and support in there, so they feel that that's where it might have gone awry. Um, they told me that they would make sure that it was certainly supported until they had everything put in place and where it was supposed to be going forward.
It just makes me awful nervous, there's been a two-point...
And, and I, and I, and I didn't...
I want to make sure it's not being corners cut and we're replacing stuff later.
I did make that comment to the contractor, and he assured me that they were not, so... But I will talk to B and K as well.
Yeah, I just think we need to stress that.
Oh, we're on the community center, where's the funding? Where, where are they at for fundraising?
Um, I do not have a good number from the hometown pride committee on what, anything that they have raised additionally since they have started seeking out more fundraising. I know that so far to date, um, I've gotten reimbursed on majority of one of the grants, and they have enough cash on hand to cover, um, another payment request or part of the payment requests that I submitted to them. So, um, I don't have a good financial report that I can give you, um, on where we're at, especially with the fundraising piece, so...
Well, we have to come up with $400,000, get the drop, what do we make? Is that correct?
Yes.
The TIF, the TIF report.
TIF, yeah. Okay, we have five numbers applied to be on the community center board. I make the motion to approve those five numbers. Second?
Second.
Rule call.
Walton.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Frank.
No.
Beckman.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Bonding discussion.
So, I mean, the last piece of our talk today is, basically I've been talking to bonding council, so I've been trying to put together a bonding package so that we can go out and put some things together so that we can try and get the best interest rate possible. So what I had included in your packet is kind of where I'm at with, um, the bonding package to date would be reimbursement, we did the resolution for the street sweeper, um, the Highway 175 water main project, um, that we did a reimbursement resolution on for $400,000 of that project. Um, then the biggest thing that's, that's kicking this in really, um, is right now the fire department equipment bus, so that's scheduled to come in here fairly quickly, so, um, and that was designed to be put into debt service, so that's about $155,000. And then, um, whether you wanted to try and potentially go on with this water sewer extension for Highway 175, I had added that for a question mark. Um, and then some various other projects, um, that Jason and I have been kind of working on is, you know, storm sewer project across from the park, um, in the outlet to the lake. We don't have, um, a quote on that yet. The sewer main project on Denison Beach where we found the electrical line through the sewer main that will need repair and some street replacements. Um, and then the other thing was, I've been trying to get updated pricing for the generators that we wrote a FEMA grant for. That FEMA grant was written, I think, back in like 2021, um, and I haven't heard anything. So it was a matter of, we have a generator here at the city and we feel that it works. Now, I think the grant was written for an upgrade, but my understanding is they may or may not have one at the fire station, and that would probably be a priority that we can maybe roll, you know, some of that money from the equipment bus, you know, and add to it for that piece, so I've been seeing if that would fit into this package or not. Um, and then any other projects that the council, you know, would want to consider for bonding so that we can kind of get this package put together, um, you know, and go forward. Whether, whether you actually end up bonding for it, you know, here in the next month or so or not, it's just to, to get that conversation out in front of you of what you guys wanted to try and get accomplished.
What about you, Walton?
That's going to all, that's completely separate from this bonding package because that's all going to be held through SRF, um, similar to the wastewater treatment plant. So that's separate from just a general GO, general obligation. That's going to be a revenue bond that will, you know, be handled through SRF, the state revolving fund.
Truce, I have a question, so, because I don't really know. So the SRF, why did you, or why is it better to do the bond than it is to get the SRF for that water main bracket out of the back hole?
I don't know that it would qualify technically, and there's a lot of hoops and whistles for that. Um, instead of doing, you, you can certainly do this under a general, a general GO loan. I don't know that it, that that project would qualify necessarily for an SRF, and I was kind of leaving some of that, I mean, we could look at it to be added to that project.
I was just curious.
Um, you know, at the end of the day, yeah.
So is this a bond issue then that the community has to vote on, or...
No, this would not be a bond issue that the community has to vote on. We basically have already done the reimbursement resolutions, um, but if, you know, for the street sweeper and the water main project, the fire equipment bus, that isn't, you know, I don't know if it's subject to reverse referendum or not, I don't think that that one is. Because it's a, it's a primary, it's, it's, or it's an emergency piece of equipment.
Is that a payment for the whole bus or just part?
That's the whole, that's, well, that's...
It's just, it's just for the bus, not for anything else.
So the donations would go towards the outfitting?
Right, so we got, I think the board, and the seat, the seats for the... Oh, we put air packs on, the seats that we sit in with the air packs on the bus to where she built it in, the lights, the siren, the painting, that upthing that Toines is going to do, I don't even know, it's been 40s.